I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen for Monday, March 9th, 2020 to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, we were, as far as presentations go, our Health Director, David Knopf, and I, as you know, have been working on the response to the novel coronavirus known as COVID-19. So I'm going to give you a little bit of an update right now, so we'll just consider this, his presentation and my first selectman's report, all in one. So today, we had a statewide conference call at 5:00 PM with all of the agencies of cognizance, Department of Emergency Management and Homeland Security, Department of Public Health, who is the lead agency on the virus epidemic, the Governor, it was his conference call today, the Commissioner of Education, the Commissioner of the Department of Emergency Response and Security, the Office of Early Childhood Education, and ConOSHA. The situation today is that fifty, let's see, fifty-six people in the state of Connecticut have been tested for the coronavirus. The criteria for testing remains very stringent. You must be either sick and in the hospital, or having traveled to an area of geographic concern, or in face-to-face contact with somebody that has a positive test for the coronavirus, or your physician, by virtue of your immune-compromised state underlying health issues, or your age recommends, because you have all the symptoms that might suggest you have the coronavirus, that you be tested. The state of Connecticut right now has two testing kits. Each kit can test 600 people. So 1,200 people in total, it's not very many tests in relation to the number of people, you know, three and a half million people that live in the state of Connecticut. This week, private agencies, LabCorp and Quest Diagnostics, are beginning to open up their commercial testing for the coronavirus. Once more of these private agencies are online to test, physicians will have more capability of authorizing tests to occur. Right now, all of the testing is happening through the state of Connecticut Department of Public Health. We consider the virus outbreak to be emerging. In communities around us, there are incidents of outbreaks in Westchester, in Rhode Island, in Massachusetts, so my message tonight to everyone is, the coronavirus is here. It very well could have been here for quite a while. Eighty percent of the people that contract the coronavirus get very mild, sometimes no symptoms, but they remain a carrier and a transmitter for the coronavirus. Children in particular seem to be, thankfully, individuals who have very limited symptoms of the coronavirus, but they can transmit the virus to adults, and of concern would be to the elderly and to people who have immune-compromised systems. And what I mean by underlying health issues are diabetes, heart health issues, kidney issues, lung issues, and anybody that's taking immune-suppressing medications. So we are particularly mindful of our assisted-living communities here in the town of Darien, and our local public health agency has been in contact with those private business entities to make sure that they're following all appropriate and enhanced protocols for screening the folks that come in to visit, and all of their cleaning and disinfecting protocols. New guidance today by the Governor. I do want to say that the Governor has not issued a public health emergency for the state of Connecticut at this time. Because the issue is emerging, things can, do happen hourly. But in spite of the fact of not issuing a public health emergency, they are strongly recommending that people do not meet in large groups of 100 or more members where you would be in close proximity to one another. The objective is to try and slow the process of the social transmission of the coronavirus. So that has implications, obviously, for many local agencies, even for our own RTM. What does that mean? We cannot compel government at this point, because there's no declaration, we cannot mandate that you don't meet in large groups, but we're encouraging all local agencies to use their best judgment, if those gatherings are nonessential, to consider, you know, changing the date or canceling those. For travel advice, I recommend highly that you look at the CDC website, cdc.gov, has tremendous sum of information on all aspects of the coronavirus, from how it started in Wuhan, China, on the end of December, to travel advisories, and to be particularly mindful of the places across the world that are at a Level III travel advisory, that includes China certainly, Italy, Iran, South Korea. And we heard this afternoon that the Italian government has essentially quarantined the entire country of Italy, which is kind of unprecedented, but everybody's working very hard to try and stem the transmission of this disease. We're hoping that those measures are not required here in the United States. We generally have excellent public health protocols here, and I think that if each and every one of us does our own personal part to make sure that we are enhancing our personal health hygiene and not unnecessarily exposing ourselves or the people that we love and care about to illness, that would be great. The coronavirus situation is exacerbated at this time because it's also flu season. And there's been information traveling in the community about someone knowing that someone was tested for the coronavirus. And what I want to say explicitly is, local government would not be notified if someone were tested for the coronavirus. Our local health department would be notified if there were a test that was positive, because it becomes the responsibility of local health department to actually monitor the quarantine of any individual that tests positive for the coronavirus. But you may hear that people are being tested because they're sick, and that's true. Folks who are sick, who have flu-like symptoms, are being tested for all other strains of flus and illnesses to rule those out before they're recommended for testing for the coronavirus. That may change as more testing capabilities come online, but that's the process and protocol right now. The World Health Organization, WHO dot I N T, also has substantive amount of information on their website. We have information on the town website, you can access it by the homepage. The public health department has information on their part of the town website. And I, you might also hear that there are a number of colleges and universities in our general metropolitan region, including in Connecticut, Sacred Heart University, and several universities in New York City, that are going to stop offering in-person classes and go to an e-learning scenario. That may also happen with our public school agencies. Those decisions are made at the local level. So we are in contact every day, our emergency management team and myself are in communication every day with the superintendent of schools to make sure that we're on top of that issue as the need arises. There's a host of other issues that are related to business continuity, for, obviously, businesses and local partners, but here for municipal government, and we've been working with Kate and our other town employees to work on plans for business continuity. We're a public-facing agency, we have to be available to you to provide the services that you need, but also be in a position to make sure that we're protecting our staff and the public from any of us that might get sick. And in return, we ask that if you're sick, you stay home. And hopefully, if there's a town service that you need, call ahead if you're sick, and hopefully, we can help figure out how to take care of those needs that you have without you coming in and exposing the general public and town staff with sickness. And the stay home if you're sick advice really applies to all of your daily activities. You might feel that you're generally well enough to go along with your daily routine, but remember, that person that you come in contact with at the grocery store or in the library might have a compromised immune system, and you don't want to risk getting them sick unnecessarily. So err on the side of caution and stay home if you're sick. The one thing I do want to caution is that, don't be afraid to reach out to your healthcare providers if you're not feeling well, either from flu-like symptoms or other sicknesses. We don't want, you know, fear of going to the doctor's office or the hospital to cause you to not seek the care that you need, but it's important that you call ahead. If you're not feeling well, call your doctor, they may have different protocols for you to be able to be evaluated by their staff. So don't expose yourself or anyone else unnecessarily by just showing up at a doctor's office or at an emergency room at a hospital, that would be very helpful to the general public. With that, I think that's the high-level update as of today, but I will entertain questions from the board on the virus.
Thank you very much, very thorough.
Okay. Great, thank you, and I will keep everyone updated as needed, for sure. All right, town, well...
It's on this topic.
If you don't mind waiting, where do we have, if you don't mind waiting for public comment, Chris, that would be very helpful.
Okay, what's part of Corona?
That's great, that's great. When we get there, I'd love to hear about Corona and anything else you want to talk about. Okay, Kate?
Two things I wanted to bring up. We should be seeing construction start at Highland Farms shortly, thanks to the mild winter. So that's very good news. And you all got our new style of packet. So we just wanted to highlight a couple of things for you, for anybody, you know, who looks at them online. Don't know if you noticed, some of the numbers on the agenda, had, they were, if you looked at it online, they were blue and underlined.
Yeah.
Those are direct hyperlinks to the backup documents. The packet, as it is online, does, if you want to page down one at a time, it will show the full agenda and all the backup, but if you wanted to go to something specific, you know, just click on that hyperlink, and it'll bring you right to the specific backup for an item. So we're kind of excited about this.
Yeah, this is great. The only thing that I would like to ask, a slight modification, and I know why we did it this way, was to put the executive session documents in order of the agenda. I would love to see us take these executive session resumes and put them at the back of the packet.
So, there's a private packet for the selectmen that has things that, like the resumes...
Yep.
Should have, I think we should have just had the letters, in the public packet, just the letters from the town committees and the...
Yeah, they're in the back.
Right, I think we can't do that, what you're asking, because it's the way the private packet is developed.
Okay.
I'll ask them.
We'll discuss that, because I, it's a lot of paper before we get to the meat of our Board of Selectmen meeting agenda. But it's really good, otherwise. Could I, just want to make a comment about the Highland Farms construction?
Sure.
So as that construction begins, we will be issuing a letter to the adjacent neighbors. We are scheduling a meeting, I believe it's in June, to talk with the neighbors about landscape, with the idea that we'll have our landscape plan in place for fall plantings. So I just want to make sure that everybody knows that we will honor our commitment to do outreach to the adjacent neighbors about screening plants. Okay, anything else, Kate?
No.
Okay, moving on to new business, discuss and take action on a request to approve the St. Luke's 5K. This is a road race that we have approved the last couple of years. This year, it's going to take place on Sunday, November 1st. I believe that that should say 2020, not 2019. Sorry. It only involves the streets that are near St. Luke's Church, Ringsend Road, Harbor Drive, Pear Tree Point, Longneck Road, and as with any of these events that require the assistance of the Darien Police Department, Local Traffic Authority, and the Parks and Recreation Commission, those approvals have to be in place in order for the event to take place. Even if we approve it today, it needs those additional approvals.
Right, so this one did not need Parks and Rec because they didn't join any parks, but they were funded by the police commission.
Great, perfect. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve?
I'm sorry, I just have a question, yeah, I just have a question. So just to clarify the process, so first it goes to the police commission, and they, because we also have this issue with Nuroton Presbyterian and their race, so I just want to understand.
Right, we'd like them to go to the police commission, and if appropriate, the Parks and Recreation Commission before they come here.
Okay, so the police commission says yea or nay?
Yes, and Parks Commission would say yea or nay if they're using a park.
Yep.
And only then do we ask you to vote on them.
Is this a new event that you're, the Nuroton Presbyterian?
Well, I'm just, whether or not we should be thinking, but again, if it's the police commission's jurisdiction, then clearly it's not ours, so, but the idea that they alternate, they take turns, that right now, they're looking to block, potentially block, Nuroton Presbyterian, because they have a new policy about the roads?
So I would, I would say, you know, you bring up a very good point, because I do know that the police commission is not approving any new events...
Right.
...that include, that involve our roadways.
Right.
So I think you bring up a good point, that we don't want, we want to be fair and equitable and...
Right, that's what I'm just trying to, whether it's not for this one, but going forward, do we look at alternating, do we sort of share the roads with all these wonderful organizations?
Well, that's never been raised before, and...
We'll bring it up, we'll talk to the police commission about it. Okay, yeah, thank you. So for this year, I'll entertain a motion to approve the road race for St. Luke's. Sarah, oh, and then Krista seconds. All those in favor? Okay, thank you.
And for full disclosure, I'm not a member of either establishment itself.
Great, but thank you for bringing that up. Okay, second new business item is to discuss and take action to approve the request to hang bicentennial flags in the downtown. So we have two guests here this evening. We have Al Miller from the Bicentennial Committee, and we have David Hawes, who is a wonderful, generous businessman and Darien resident. So David, if you wouldn't mind, maybe, and Al certainly, if you want to, if you wouldn't mind coming up here and telling us about the proposal.
Greetings, my name is David Hawes, H K W E S. Three years ago, we came to you all, and I know it's different people, but to get approval to fly from the town lamppost American flags, which we've done now, because we're going into the fourth season, because it is the 200th anniversary, we had some sample flags made up, and for whatever reason, thought it would be a good idea to fly every other flag, U.S. Anniversary, U.S. And little did I know, it would take a little bit of approval, or a lot of approval, but we're here. This is a sample of the flag. These are a little bigger than what we had been flying before, but we're changing all the U.S. flags as well, to two by three. I met with Ed Gentile, who has no problem with us flying this flag or a larger U.S. flag on approximately 100 locations.
The bicentennial flag, if I'm correct in what you shared with me earlier, would be, the intent is to replace every other American flag with a bicentennial flag, is that still...
Just for this year, unless you want to, you know, we don't know how they'll hold up.
Yep.
These are silk-screened, to keep the cost reasonable for a one-year event, which requires two flags being sewn to one.
And maybe this is also a question for Al, but if you could share with us how these flags are being paid for?
Our group that I started to do the U.S. flags, also had people who were interested in becoming part of it. I asked, someone said yes. It may be a corporate sponsor, it could be of private individuals. They'd like to remain nameless for the moment until you approve it. The cost for 50 of these is $2,000.
And this is a direct transaction between your group, that we'll call you the flag group for now, and not necessarily through the Bicentennial Committee, Al, is that correct?
Yeah, that is correct. So I'm Al Miller, I'm the chairman of the Darien 2020 Bicentennial Committee, and I think it's a great idea, thank you so much for all this work you've done, it's fantastic. But correct, we are not, right now, the donors, either corporate or individual donors, are anonymous. None of the money that we have raised, either from the town or from private donations or from corporate sponsors, are used to fund this. This is strictly a work that David and his group has done.
And as before, from the time we started doing this, this is zero cost to the town. You know, once we put the flags up there, the town's flags are not our flags. We just take care of them, we store them, we replace them as needed. There's no impact to your budget.
We're very ready for that. We would not like that to be the case at the moment, but I will say that flying the American flag, and now the bicentennial flags, is a really wonderful gesture. We thank you for the idea and for the funding and the action to actually install them. It's wonderful, and that raises just one more question that I have for Kate, and that is, the accepting of a gift.
Yeah, that's my thought. That's where I was going.
Yeah, yes, they have to be.
Okay, so we're, I don't think that you would need to come back to us, but we will have to go through a process of formally accepting a gift to the town, probably should have done that with the American flags, we approved the American flags...
You did, no, you did.
We accepted the gift?
Yeah.
I think we may have accepted the gift, yeah.
Okay.
No, you did.
All right.
You could, yeah, we can put that on the next...
No, that wasn't one-niner.
Okay. Could we amend tonight's motion to do it?
Can we just amend this?
Yes, you can amend the motion, because it's 2,000, and it's not an appropriation, so it just needs yours. So you can approve the request to accept the gift, hereby accepts the gift.
And one flag.
So now, who is going to hang the flags?
Public works.
Oh, you guys like to hang all signs?
So the only...
If you want to hang them.
Do we, do we have to put a dollar amount of the gift in the acceptance?
Did you say 50 flags?
Well, I sent you, I sent you the proposal for 50, the estimate for 50.
Correct, okay.
It was literally just under $2,000.
We can save value at under $2,000.
So 50 flags will be hung, or 100?
50, and if you want...
There's 100 flags in total, but 50 will be...
Oh, 50, 50, 50, okay.
So the big input that the Bicentennial Commission, Committee has, is to give permission to use the logo, which will grant official permission, it's not to be used for merchandise or for commercial purposes. Like I say, we're so grateful for you for doing this, and your group for doing this, it's fantastic.
Yeah, I mean, this is not just me, just, I mean, in the, the original group is Ringsend, it's Holliday Storage, and so, and my wife, she's going to have to volunteer.
So then, we do, we do have sponsors, and if they would like recognition, we'll have to work out what level of recognition and everything.
So to clarify, this will go in the locations where currently U.S. flags are hanging, and nowhere else.
Well, it's seasonal, because of the weather, the Christmas, it doesn't, is a conflict with Christmas wreaths, so we work with the chamber on the timing. But it is, as soon as we can do it now...
Right, right.
Because we're kind of running out of anniversary time.
Exactly.
And then they will fly until the wreaths go up around Thanksgiving.
Okay.
And then we can give you all the flags, and you can do whatever you want.
Well, that could be potentially, we can talk about that, right? Lots of ideas going on.
Because they are, you know, once you accept the gift, they're town flags.
Correct, correct, okay. Any other questions for David or Al? Again, we want to thank you so much for putting your ideas into action on this. So I'm going to recommend a change to the motion to say, the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Darien hereby accepts the gift of 50 flags with a total value of approximately $2,000, and hereby approves the request of the 2020 Committee to fly the Town of Darien bicentennial flags from the decorative light poles in the downtown area. Is that suitable, Kate?
Yeah, I'm just changing my typing here.
So I'll entertain a motion to approve this as amended. Kip, may I have a second? Sarah? Any further discussion? All those in favor? Great, thank you, can't wait to see him up.
Yeah, that's wonderful.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. That's me too. Brett, sit down. Go easy on him, will ya?
Terrific. Okay, moving on, regular meeting minutes of February 24th. Any corrections or additions?
Yep.
Okay, go ahead, Sarah?
You go ahead, you might have mine.
First page, first selectman report, second line, conveying, not, it says conveying, convening, not conveying.
Yes, thank you.
Next line, Town Administrator Report, first line, toward the end, flexible hours, plural.
Okay.
Next page, presentation, second line, halfway through, that cops, they are here, no, that cops are here to help people, get rid of the they.
Ooh, the they out, that was my...
Yep.
And then, on the final part of that paragraph, after it says, as well as learn about, I would add, the dangers of drugs vaping and alcohol. Next line, next portion, new business, third line down, Ginsberg gave the history, not hostery.
Okay.
Next paragraph, second line, in, eliminate the word after process, and, we don't need that. And I would say, the next sentence should read, the estimate is that this project will take approximately six months, starting in May and June, rather than the way it's written.
Okay, hang on a second. Approximately six months, okay.
I don't, I cannot interpret the next paragraph at all.
Well, you discussed the enhancements to pedestrian safety, I think it was and amenities that will go hand in hand with intersection improvement and coordination of the school There was, there seemed to be a lot of discussion at the end about how this all was affecting pedestrians and kids.
Yep, I think, I think it's clear. I think, I think it's clear. Anything else, Kip?
Yes, on item, on page 20.
Page 118 was last.
Yes, go ahead.
At the bottom of page 18. Can you change that comma to a?
Okay, you're, okay, definitely. Give me the item.
Page 18?
No, I don't have the same page on this.
Oh, sorry. Ms. Stevenson, thank you all for staff for their hard work on this, ending that, the next one, we have a period, kind of a comma.
Which, which item, Marlene?
It's the, it's the bottom of page three of the minutes, and it's.
Thank you.
Yep. Should end in a period, not a comma.
Okay.
I have one on 20, but Kip may have it.
Okay, go ahead.
It's the third paragraph. Ms. Stevenson asks what the town will be responsible for regarding maintenance of these training systems. Does that make sense?
It's in to me.
Of course, the rest of this is hard to follow because we have a system on FAR, we have a system on, and maybe that's, maybe that's intentional.
My comment was meant to be global about both of the training systems.
Right.
That were being gifted.
Okay.
At the end of the paragraph, Mr. Martin asks if this could help with school crossing zones. Period at the end of that.
After school crossing, so what about safety routes?
I have, at the end of the sentence, Captain Schrader said that they plan to use it in schools and other public buildings.
It's the end of the paragraph.
Right before the motion.
We should have a period there.
Oh, there. I thought, okay. I thought you were saying in the first sentence.
David, did you have a comment?
No.
On that page? Okay. All right. Anything else on the meeting, regular meeting minutes of February 24th?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, the regular? No, I'm sorry, special meeting.
Yeah, regular. Okay. So I'll entertain a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of February 24th as amended.
So move.
Sarah, may I have a second?
Second.
Kip, all those in favor? Okay, thank you. All right. Special meeting minutes of February 24th. Krista?
The attendees? Incorrect.
Yeah, no, I would say.
Go ahead, Sarah Newman.
Yep.
Oh, my God. I, I, that is all me. Thank you, Krista.
Okay. Yep. Any other corrections or additions? Okay, all those in favor of approving the special meeting minutes of February 22nd as amended? David, may I have a second? Sarah, all those in favor? Great. Okay, thank you. All right. We have only one appointment this evening. We will reschedule with Sue Ann Shore and Ruth Ann Ramsey. So I will entertain a motion to approve the appointment of Kathleen McDermott to the Commission on Aging for a term expiring on March 31st, 2021. Sarah? Kip seconds. All those in favor? Great, thank you. And we welcome Kathleen to the Commission on Aging. Okay. And now we're on to public comment. Mr. No.
Thank you. The coronavirus, as you guys are speaking about it, it was, it was the thought that it was not, there were, there were no symptoms, but actually, what they found is that the, it starts in your lungs, and you can self-test by taking a deep breath and holding your breath for as long as you can. And if you're healthy, you can use a stopwatch or something to check to see how long you can hold your breath. And if you feel that you're ill, and if you do the same self-test, you'll find that perhaps you can hold your breath for just half as long, and that means there's something going on with your lungs, and you'll have no other symptoms. You won't have a runny nose, you won't have any fever, you won't, but it starts in your lungs, and that's how they figured out how to self-test. So that's what I had to say. Come on up. You know, I just watch these guys with the flags, and I'm really excited what they're doing. The, and I had an idea, if they numbered those flags and they put it out where any, you know, any resident would like to purchase one flag, not 20, but just because there's only 50, where they could purchase it, they'd get their money back so they can still do other things with the $2,000 that they've allocated already. And then at the end of the season, when the flags come down, the people that bought them will, you know, be able to pick them up and they can have the flag to hang, you know, at some point, send it home.
Yeah.
Okay. The, while I was away for a couple of months, seeing my dad, you know, I keep up with what's going on, the doings of the town by following the local online stuff. And I read something on the Darien, which was, I was kind of shocked about, but not shocked, but it was just, it didn't seem kind of trivial on your part, Jamie, but it's, you said, you know, we all get misquoted. But, you know, you were talking about, it was, it was minutes from this meeting, from this meeting, I think in October. And you were talking about the four-day work week, and you sum it up with, we're just going to give it a try, see if it works. And, you know, I hit the campaign trail over the summer, and I met people who were, you know, friends of yours, Dave Campbell for one. He's adamantly against it. I mean, just blood boiling adamantly, doesn't want it. But at the same time, he's in Florida for three months, you know, in his new house, but so, but he's still, he's, you know, he was, you know, he's one of your, one of your buddies. I mean, so I don't know, I don't know, I think, I think before we do this, we should put it to the RTM. That's what I really think. I think we should have it properly vetted. I think we should give the opportunity for the RTM to weigh in on this four-day week and get the public's feel for it. That's what I really think. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. I, I would, before we close this meeting, I appreciate Mr. No's comments about a self-test for the coronavirus. I have no information from the local or health, or, or state health department to suggest that that is a viable test of the coronavirus. So it's an interesting theory, shortness of breath is most certainly one of the potential symptoms of the coronavirus. There are many others. Every person is, is different, and certainly, if you are having shortness of breath with or without any other symptoms, you should seek the advice of your health care professional. Okay, agenda review. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Kip moves. David seconds. All those in favor? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.